Six o'clock, I'd like to call this being the order. John, would you leave it with the indication, please?
For the Lord, thank for all the blessings you've disposed upon us. Thank you for the rains, you help feed our grasses and make our plants grow. Please help this council make the right decision, point us in the right direction for growth and prosperity. In your name we pray. Amen.
Dan, the class, please.
United States of America, in the republic from which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
Counsel, I copy the agenda, would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Being in all favor of a sure hand, thank you, counsel. That's what to show that Mr. Fountain is not losing this evening due to his work. July 11, 2016, regular council meeting minutes. Lisa.
Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order at 6:00 P.M. He requested Lonnie Waters to give the indication. Councilmember John Faust led him to a solid pledge of allegiance. Mayor Weaver stated that Councilmember Tony Fountain was not able to attend this council meeting due to illness. Mayor Weaver asked if the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember Jim Loney asking an item could be added under new business to discuss future council workshops. Councilmember Ann Snady made a motion to approve the agenda with the addition. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. City clerk Lisa Wall read the minutes of the June 6, 2016, regular meeting. Mayor Weaver asked that it be added to the minutes that executive session was for the purpose of discussing the acquisition of real estate. Councilmember Ann Snady made a motion to adopt the minutes as read. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Motion carried with Councilmember Jim Loney abstaining as he was absent for the June 6 meeting and Mayor Weaver voting along with the remaining council present. Item A, under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Chief Steve Roper to present to council an update on a hazard mitigation grant for generators. Chief Roper stated that the costs have been revised and sent for FEMA's approval due to the price increase on the generators and engineering costs. Chief Roper stated that the revised project cost for all six generators is $472,211 with a federal share of $354,158, state share of $47,221, and city share of $70,832. This is assuming that the entire cost is approved by FEMA and GMA. If, in the original grant, the city's share was $54,185 of a total cost of $362,231. No action taken. Item B, under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Sunny Underwood Planning and Zoning Director to present an alcohol license application to council for approval. He informed council that Carlo De Pizzo, who is opening Wingsology located at 61 North Main Street, had completed the application process and the required advertising had been met. He stated that the background check had been received from the state since last meeting and that there were no disqualifying factors to prevent Mr. De Pizzo from obtaining the alcohol license. He is now requesting that his application for a license to sell alcohol, beer, and wine by the drink be approved. Councilmember Jim Loney made a motion to approve the license. Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item C, under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized David Buchanan and Lonnie Waters to present to council their recommendation on a new tractor in Bush Hall. Mr. Buchanan stated that based on demonstrations by Nelson Tractor and Snead-Aid as well as observations of the same machine that is currently being used by the county, he recommended that the city purchase a 6105 John Deere tractor with sidearm from Nelson Tractor at a cost of $115,000. Snead-Aid's quote was higher at $121.27 with 10 more horse pilot. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion for the purchase of the equipment. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to purchase the tractor from Nelson pending the cab has tip pole protection. Discussion followed. Councilmember Jim Loney seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item A, under new business, Mayor Weaver again recognized David Buchanan and Lonnie Waters to present to council their recommendation on the purchase of a 2003 Caterpillar excavator Cat 322 CCL with a 60-foot boom. Mr. Buchanan stated that the city is currently renting this equipment from Co-Equipment at a cost of $5,000 per month, and if the council approves, it could be purchased for $75,000. Mayor Weaver stated that the machine would be used 60% for roads and 40% for the water sewer plants. As Attorney Bill Pickett stated that the city could purchase this equipment using the two funds. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion for the purchase of the equipment. Councilmember Jim Loney made a motion to purchase the equipment with the city evaluating its current equipment to sell for surplus. Discussion followed. Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item B, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Lonnie Waters to present to council the results of the July 11, 2016 bid opening for the Hood Road paving project. Mr. Waters stated that the bid tabulation is as follows. Bartow Paving Company, $439,653.68. White Construction Company, $388,686.75. C.W.[352.93][352.93]Matthews, $402,064.34. Johnson Paving, $379,978.71. Northwest Georgia Paving, $343,914.25. Mr. Waters stated that the low bid was $343,914.25 from Northwest Georgia Paving and that the city has used this contractor on a previous paving project. Mr. Waters stated that the city has been satisfied with Northwest Georgia Paving Incorporated's work in the past. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to approve the low bidder Northwest Georgia Paving Incorporated at $343,914.25 for the Hood Road paving project. Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Motion carried unanimously. Item C, under new business, Lisa Wall presented to council two applications for reduced water sewer rates for approval. Following review by council, Councilmember Jim Loney made a motion to approve the applications, and Councilmember Ann Snady seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item D, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Councilmember Jim Loney to open up discussion regarding the scheduling of council workshops in the future. Councilmember Loney stated that the work sessions would allow for council to get better and more information on city activities. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion for the scheduling of council workshops. Councilmember Jim Loney made such motion. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Mayor Weaver stated that council should contact his assistant to offer dates and times of availability. Motion carried unanimously. Finance Director Lisa Wall gave the financial report for the month of June 2016. Lonnie Waters gave the animal control report for the month of June 2016. Mr. Waters also gave a report on upcoming paving projects in the city. Chief Red Lovell gave a report of police activities for the month of June 2016. Captain Randy Banks gave a report of fire activities for the month of June 2016. Councilmember John Faust gave an update on JYSI activities, being no other business to come before council. Councilmember Ann Snady made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Council is scheduled to convene next, but the regular council meeting could be held August 1, 2016.
Entertain a motion.
I need to make a correction.
What is it?
Uh, rollover protection, not tip pole protection.
Oh, I'll change that.
And Lisa, at the first of the report, members present, I believe I was there and Toby wasn't.
Oh, okay. I'll give those.
Thank you. Make a motion, if it is to be approved, it's changed.
Motion to approve will change.
Second.
Did you make a motion?
Okay, you can go. Any discussion? Being in all favor of a sure hand, thank you, counsel. Under old business, item A, update on the generators, Vaughn?
We're gonna wear the generators back before we get out of here.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel.
So, as of today, we are still waiting to hear back from FEMA. All paperwork's been turned into FEMA. I talked with Kelly Brockenberg on the wind state last week, and she said everything is still in FEMA's hands. Waiting to hear back from FEMA.
Questions, counsel? Thank you, Vaughn. We'll be hearing from you shortly for the fire report. Under new business, Mr. Lonnie Waters, Jeanette Drive Repair.
As everyone knows, there's bits of damage to Jeanette Drive. We've all saw it and had some complaints about it. But Johnson Paving has came out and been working out there. They milled it down between three and four inches. Back when that road was tarred and gravel, they got into that. That's how far down they have milled it. I've got some pictures on the slideshow of how much asphalt they're putting down. The owner, Earl Johnson, was out there and running the paving machine and supervising the job. And he says that he feels sure, even with the big trucks, that this should fix it and we shouldn't have any more problems. Because now it's got three to four inches, and it's actually got, where they milled it down, it's got like a shoulder on each end to keep everything compacted and keep pressure on it. So he was pretty confident that this would work. And in the deal, I talked with them last week, and they came up with a price of nearly $28,000 to repair everything. That's the mill and the asphalt and everything. After speaking with them and passing conversations through his appraiser on the jobs, Earl has sent me a word back and sensed that we had given, you know, they had earned as a low bidder other jobs, and they want to continue a good relationship with the city as all these companies do. They have agreed to do it for $20,000. The asphalt company has gave them a discount in the asphalt. And because this is a repair of a job that they had done, so they have deducted nearly $8,000 from the cost of it. And they are out there today completing that and moving to Arbor Hills. And I'm here tonight to, I guess, just give permission to write the check to pay for these repairs.
Counsel, just to add to this briefly, Jeanette Drive is a feeder street to the city industrial park. We are going to put a no-truck sign for through traffic from Donovan Westbrook Drive, which goes through the industrial park down to Hood Road, and we want to also place no-truck traffic, through traffic on Pioneer as well as Hood Road unless they have business in that area. But I today saw a large truck from Georgia Marble make a right turn on Pioneer, and this is what's causing that street to fail. These streets aren't as strong as the road in front of this building, State Route 53, North Main Street. So the concrete company has already agreed to that, but those signs are already, I believe here, and they will be placed, in place shortly this week. This week, as shortly as possible. But anyway, but we do have to provide a road to our industrial park, but these trucks are of such weight, we're gonna have to encourage them to get on the more strong, strongly-built or better-built streets.
What's the repercussions?
We'll probably have to set a fine. We'll determine that in the near future. I don't have that on there. It'll probably be on the agenda next month.
And also, they did, I left this out, there, I found one location on Hood Road where the asphalt had started giving way, and they actually repaired two pretty lengthy strips on Hood Road, too. Now, I've got, I've been in contact with the striping companies as far as Cove Road, whenever that job is completed, and then while they're down here, they can run out there and put new stripes on it. And it's just like 400 foot is the longest strip, so, you know, we should be in good shape.
We, I looked at that this afternoon, and we may have to re-stripe the entire stretch of Jeanette because the truck traffic, or at least a large portion of it hauling the tar and the asphalt in, has pretty much done away with existing striking. So we'll look at that as well. But anyway, with that being said, would entertain a motion?
Motion is to pay the $20,000 or under them the $28,000 that we previously approved. Is that motion?
Need a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Being in all favor of a sure hand, thank you, counsel. Thank you, Lonnie. Item C, out of B, excuse me, equivalent repair, David Buchanan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel. We have, we purchased a great hall about three, four months ago. We've been using it. We've had some, made some repairs on it. It's been in the repair shop for the last month. They had to repair the whole complete wiring harness, had a few oil leaks, and a couple of hydraulic lines needed replacing also. This took a lot of man hours, a lot of labor, and they sent me the bill, and it was for
This is the equipment that we've been using, mainly in the northern part of town, and once we get back, we get out of the creek, you'll be seeing it all over town. This is the one that's opening our ditches back up, and it's a very valuable piece of equipment. And the amount of money we have in it, with David giving me the good housekeeping seal on it, it's ready, and the council approves, we'll get that thing back on the road as soon as we get out of the creek and maybe off of Cove Road. But anyway, would entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the repairs.
Motion to approve the repair.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
That's where the money is coming from.
It's blocked. Any further discussion?
Yeah, we need Lonnie to come back up here and save us more money.
We'll spend it. Any further discussion? Being in all favor of a sure hand, thank you, counsel. Item C, says alcohol ordinance. I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Ann Snady to make a little presentation to council for her concerns.
Which, I just wanna look at us changing our alcohol ordinance and get, pick its recommendation and what we could do to align more with what the state law is for the ratio, food, alcohol ratio.
Explain a little bit about ratio of food and alcohol for the public.
The restaurants have to have a, meet a certain percentage to have, for their food and alcohol. This is stopping us from bringing some places in that just want to have a more equal balance. It's a 70,000?
Eighty-five?
Seventy.
Seventy-five, seventy-five, okay.
Yeah. But what I would recommend, or like to recommend, if we can, is to go with what the state recommends, which is no food alcohol ratio except for on Sunday. Is that correct? The bill would have to...
I'll do some work on it.
And just, I might add to that, is the city, in the past, while that was in place, the city wanted to discourage drinking and driving, and 7525 makes it really difficult for the restaurants, but I believe we can still control it with the state because there still wants a certain food. It just makes the ratio that they have to sell sometimes most, almost impossible, and there's ways around it if you were the bookkeeper for a restaurant, which we kind of confuse us from time to time, why much alcohol versus food, so we get a more true picture.
And the surrounding counties are all a lot.
And what you were saying, I want to go if I might.
Go ahead.
Well, our ordinance now could discourage an Alpibees or Longhorns, just by looking at our ordinance, might be more concerned about that, and we might not be able to get that business, that would just pass us right on the body.
Correct. Thank you.
Took words out of your mouth?
Right.
Okay, with, with that.
And the other thing I want to mention for him to look at was if we were going to allow people to come in for our festivals or that kind of stuff.
Explain yourself, Miss Anne.
We've got a couple that just ask if we could bring either beer trucks or wine vendors in doing wine tasting, different things like that, and just need to know that we've got the, Bill Pickett researched it, see if we can legally do it versus what the state guidelines are and the laws are.
And you mentioned to me, and Mr. Pickett a few minutes ago, that Canton, Georgia has such an event.
Mm-hmm. They do.
Okay, we could look into their...
And actually, we got a couple of places around us do that.
Okay. But with that, we'll have that ready for you at the next council meeting, and we can move forward with that.
Thank you.
Both items. Any further questions?
No.
Thank you. Okay, with that, that's all the new business. Under mayor's report, economic development report, Jerry Nekkak.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. I have three items I'd like to share this evening. First is that the development team behind the Piedmont Village mixed-use project, they've been working very diligently on getting companies interested in the project and doing some pre-signing of leases. Once they get a certain number of people committed to the project, and certainly that makes it much more desirable for them to move forward because the risk is lessened. So they are, they are getting those companies signing up, so it's moving forward very positively. I've spoken with the developer, and his exact words is that I'm actually very happy with where we are right now, and he feels very positive about the project moving forward. So I really feel great about that. It will be a very high-end quality type project, and I'd like the citizens to be pleased when it's in place. The other thing I want to share this evening is that I met with the Patriot Rail Company. This is the company that has acquired the Georgia Northeast Railroad. We went and did some looking around at industrial sites. They realized that in order to grow their railroad, they have to have more industrial locations, which they don't have many right now. So we looked at several locations within the county and the city, and one of the ideas moving forward was trying to maybe do some collaboration on how to bring that forward. In the past, it's been very difficult for our community to try to move an industrial park by ourselves because of the cost. So perhaps in a collaborative type environment, we'll be able to move forward on that, and with a competitive industrial park, it will enhance our position as we try to compete with the larger state-level type industrial projects. Last thing I want to share is that the...
One moment. Did you mention just rail company about the property at Woodbridge?
Yeah.
Any favorable report?
Well, they, it was knocking metal. They've got it on the radar, and they were, too. They've got a new, one of their new upper management people was, was on the tour, so I said, this is something that we had talked about with the previous owner, and we still want to move forward on that. And they said, you know, we'd be glad to take that into consideration.
Okay, counsel, referring to property north of Woodbridge, so federal, possible parking and/or other usage.
Yeah. Again, last items, just want to share that the entertainment and film-type opportunities have ramped up. Right now, we've had four major motion pictures look around. We've had two commercials and one television show. Television show, the requirement, but really, we didn't really have exactly what they needed, so I have collaborated with Gilmore County because they have a location that looks very, very good. And this company would be in the area for three months. They'd have 150 people on staff, and we have some services and some other things that Gilmore County doesn't have. So although we might not be able to get in our, within our county itself, it'll certainly be close enough when we get sort of on it. So again, working on those projects very strongly, also trying to collaborate when there's something that we don't have, so, you know, it at least gets close. So unless there's some questions, that's what I have for this evening.
Questions, counsel?
Thank you, Jerry.
Got it. Thank you. Financial report, item B.
In your packet, you should have a financial report comparison to budget for the month of July. And right in front of it, I also copied a, put a copy of the spreadsheet in there where it kind of follows how this loss balance has been running all year. The $20,000 you just approved is not on there as a committed project yet, but it kind of shows you where we, where we are down to a point, and then below that, if the item's not paid and it's committed and projected projects. And I, I've only got cash going in, what we've received so far, so that's why it's getting kind of a low down there at the bottom. But the last loss check we received was $72,388.65, which is a pretty good check for July. Going on to the, I'll go back to the general fund. We collected in July, we had a good month for sales tax of $93,495, which brings us here today, $606,832. And that's compared to prior month, collections was $84,924, so we had a good month for July. We're below budget on our expenditures for July in general fund. Moving on, on to the water sewer fund, we're, we're right at budget in our expenditures and a little below on the revenue. And I was looking at that today, water sewer sales are right, right where we should be, but the leachate is still a little low. We're about 46 percent. We should be at 58 percent of what we budgeted for that, but we're still showing revenues over expenditures at this, at this point. That was the main, last thing I wanted to talk about. If you have some questions.
Questions, counsel? Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Item D, police report, Chief Lovell.
Please keep that.
I already checked you, Lonnie. You don't have to come up. Lonnie, would you please? Item C, I was drawing on my agenda.
Mayor, counsel, we just had two animal calls in the city. One of them created some questions, had a raccoon attack some lady's cats over on these cellars. We did capture the raccoon and had it sent off and tested for rabies, and it was not positive for rabies. It came back negative. So everything was fine there, and I told the people in the community that, you know, it was negative. And then the other call was somebody had run over one of the ducks at the duck pond. And I did help the county with a call at 2:00 in the morning with some horses over Swan Bridge Road, but other than that, that's all.
What about the snake that's in the pump house?
Well, the county did, our city did call in, said that they had a snake in the pump house up on the cove, and I went up there and got it out. Everything's fine.
That's a pretty good size snake?
It was a, it was a large snake, yes.
Was it poisoned?
Yes.
All right.
It says, everything's good.
All right, thank you, Lonnie. Item D, police report.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel. That's the police department for the month of July responding to 1,050 calls for service from the 911 center. Upon a 64 motor vehicle accident, 51 total citations issued by the Jack Police Department following DUI 18th Street, took shot 51 uninsured motors, 22 missing lanes violations, three suspended or revoked, three possession of marijuana, Georgia State Control, total 68 for total 190 citations in City Court. Followed state warrant for taking, department, possession of methamphetamine felony, possession of related objects felony, possession of drugs on a thousand feet of a city park felony, pedestrian influence, misdemeanor obstruction felony, want that by receiving stolen property felony, want that by shoplifting Mr. Mayor, one driver has been alive, Mr. Mayor, want that by taking auto felony, and two wants for DUI open container, failure to maintain lane, and one battery, Mr. Mayor. This lane is called upon two, 57 alarm calls, 29 disorderly, 11 harassment, caused by trespassing or ordering, 84 suspicious activity, 28 domestic streets investigated, two burglaries.
Questions, counsel?
Great. What park was it?
Huh?
What park was it?
Up at the duck pond. Got a call on it up there, and they do that near school, water, city park, charge. charge.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Fire report. Vaughn?
For the month of July, City Desperate Fire Department responded to a hundred and nineteen calls. Calls were followed, one structure fire inside the city, which is on the Old Cove Road North, four structure fires with a county outside the city, two vehicle fires inside the city, two grass brush fires inside the city, auto accidents with injuries, twelve inside the city, two outside, emergency medical calls, forty-six inside the city and twenty-five outside. Other calls were eighteen inside the city, seven outside, for a hundred and nineteen calls for the month of July, which brings the yearly total to eight hundred and nine calls for City Desperate Fire Department. Fire inspector program reviewed two sets of plans, one of those being for any time fitness, the other being for Dunkin' Donuts. He also conducted fourteen regular inspections during the month.
Questions, council? Thank you, Vaughn. Under mayor's report, John, give the update on JYSA.
I don't know if y'all noticed on the football field, but football season's definitely starting, so is cheerleading. The city park, and the middle schools, the kids are already getting ready to go. They were planning on doing a jamboree just last week or next last week in August over Chesapeake, so they're busy. That's a good thing, because the school getting started, it's nice that much better.
Thank you, John. Also noted that the mayor's golf tournament will be.
Twenty-four? August twenty-four.
August twenty-four. Used to be in July, we'd already been done, but now we still have to look forward to, looking forward for a successful event. Real quick in closing, not to labor on this, but Lake Grandview, last month I gave you a report from our engineer. We're still trying to gather interest in the project in hopes of a one billion to one point five billion gallon per day permit increase. Grandview has to know something in before November, so the month of August is going to be an intense month dealing with Grandview Lake, stockholders and homeowners trying to determine whether the City of Jasper's compatibility with our water system and their lake can be worked out, using Mr. Pickett and his services as well as our engineer, working with the Environmental Protection Division, because we can only be interested if the lake would provide at least a million gallons, and we'd like to have more if possible because the repair to the dam is almost a million and a half dollars, and of course, if the lake were to become, the dam, not the lake, the dam were to become property of the City of Jasper, we will have expenses in the future as well as this expense because a dam is annually inspected and will annually need upgraded and repaired. So all these things we'll keep in mind, but we need at least a million gallons more immediately for if the City of Jasper's going to grow and move forward with any type of development from our water system, we need another raw water source. With that information, we'll be coming back to you next month with an update, hopefully after some meetings with, with Grandview. No other business coming before this, council would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Thank you, council. Thank you, guests.